The executive session is concluded at 6:55. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of open meeting law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing the next agenda item is the consent agenda, 7.0. Oh, sorry, 6.0, the information I took from any questions or discussion of 6.0. Okay, move on to 7.0.
6.1.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, okay, that's the phone call, I apologize, just went straight to 6.2. 6.1 is a resolution for energy conservation project, and are they going to call in for our staff reviews?
They're going to call.
Okay. We are presently calling Todd Snyder.
Your call cannot be continued. Time. This is something I was...
Do one of them, right?
Please enter your seven-digit access code followed by the pound key. That entry is not valid. Time. Please enter your seven-digit access code followed by the pound key. Thank you, please stand by. You will now be placed into conference.
Hello, Mr. Snyder.
Hi, this is Todd Snyder.
Hi, Todd, this is Cheryl Berlino with School District Number One. We are, I apologize for being a little bit late, but we wanted to call you on the line because we have some important business to discuss with you, and we also have some very important questions that we'd like to ask.
Sure. If we can get maybe 10 seconds, Tom Mills, he's an attorney of Utese Rock, was going to grab some of your credit. That's right. Yep.
Okay, very good. Okay, first of all, Mr. Carnes, you were involved in the meeting, was it?
Well, there's some questions, I'd like to defer to Dr. Rodriguez to introduce the topic and...
Okay, Mr. Mills, this is Dr. Rodriguez from the School District. Thank you for working with us on behalf of the School District for this financing of the energy conservation project. We have been working on this project, as you know, for the last year and a half in order to get energy conservation for the district, and we have a number of FEMS, and you are working on behalf of the School District in order to get us some financing, and I believe that we have been able to work with Mr. Snyder, and he has procured the Alpine Bank and your services to be able to help us with this. We have board president, members of the board, and Mr. Larry Carnes served as part of the Energy Conservation Committee representing the board, so we do have a number of questions from the Board of Education in order for us to get the financing taken care of to the point that the board members are satisfied, and this energy conservation is going to be a self-sustaining project, as you know, and we feel very comfortable that Mr. Mills and his firm, Mario Tremble, his associate, are very competent and are willing to provide the kind of service that we need. So with that introduction, I'm going to now defer to questions from the board members, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Carnes, who is part of the committee. Mr. Carnes?
Gentlemen, first of all, I would like to say that we are in a boardroom with about 100 people or maybe plus or minus present that are listening to all of this conversation, members of the community that are interested in what we're doing, and of course, we've been working for, is Mr. Lane on the call too, or not?
Mr. Lane is not.
Okay. We've been working with Siemens for, I guess, more than a year now, or about a year, to actually find ways to improve energy conservation within our physical plants, the various facilities that we have, both administrative and the educational, the schools that we have, and to find a way to improve and reduce the levels of energy consumption, but to roll those savings into other improvements in our school district. To a large extent, the savings that will be gained by reducing our energy costs will result in our ability to improve security in our schools, and some of the FEMS, which are the line items that we agreed to enter discussion with Siemens, include closed-circuit television, automatic locking systems, more secure access capabilities to our facilities, and given circumstances around the country, such as the Newtown experience and other experiences, we feel like that's an appropriate expenditure of these savings. And I'm going through this explanation for the benefit of the people in the room as well. The thing is that the energy savings that we will gain will offset the cost or the expenditures to achieve those savings and the other things that we'll be doing, such as the security measures, and so the project, as we envisioned, will be able to pay for itself over a 15-year term. Basically, the cost of the project comes to, and the documents that we have looked at, that you've shared with us, are a site lease, a lease purchase agreement, and the resolution that we will be voting on. Those documents include a cost of $1.25 million over a 15-year term. We did, in fact, receive this afternoon the updated amortization schedule that provided by Alpine Bank. It's our understanding that Alpine Bank is the lender, they're located in Grand Junction, Colorado. I have gone through the documents, I have talked to our CFO, who also has gone through them closely, so Christie, I may ask you to come up and help me out on some of this. But I guess the concern that I have, and of course, the one document that I started out with was the resolution, and I know that we've gotten an awful lot of information just in the last couple days, and my colleagues across the table probably have reminded me on a number of times that haste makes waste, and so we want to make sure that we fully understand what we're getting into here, and that you, as our representative with the lending institution, with Siemens and others, will make sure that you protect our interests and we're not smacking a blank check. First of all, in resolution, I was looking at section two, and we see in there that there is a base rental, and basically, this is a lease agreement, as I understand it, which enables us to, in essence, lease it to ourselves, but we will be paid back on bonds or certificates that will be issued to enable us to borrow the money to achieve the goals that we've laid out. And I see in there, looking at section two, there's a not less than 1.2 million figure, 1.250, not more than 1.250, and that the rentals or the payments that we would be making on an annual basis would not exceed $110,000 per year. Then I look at section four, gentlemen, and I see a figure of 1.275, whereas section two said 1.2 and not to exceed 1.250, so there's an inconsistency there, and an annual payment of 105 instead of 110 is preferred to in section three. Now, I'm sure these are just either oversights or numbers that were put in there because it was a kind of a developing project, but nevertheless, I did look at the amortization schedule, our CFO, Christie, cooperately looked at it as well. We're satisfied that the amortization schedule is consistent with what we had heard in the past, but we need to make sure that the documentation is in sync with those, with the amortization schedule and all of the other information. I also looked in here to see if there was any reference to the interest rate. The interest rate that will be coming is 3% grand, it's a fixed rate, and given the fact that interest rates are moving up right now, if we can grab a hold of that rate, it's a good position to be in. We do, in fact, have costs originating that and costs for the support services that you are providing, which are enumerated on the Alpine Bank amortization schedule. Did those costs come to Christie, was it about $45,000?
Yes.
For what reason? I was looking at...
The cost, the cost of the loan, of the agreement?
Oh, you're talking about the $20,000 plus the $25, all of that?
Yeah. It's about, it's about $45,000.
Yes, it is.
So we're paying a fee in order to acquire the financing, which is not unreasonable or uncommon, it is substantial. If we amortize that into the repayment schedule, I presume that our interest rate would probably be a little bit higher, like 3.3 or something like that, if we figure that out.
I think the average is like this, like 3.2, 3.3.
Something like that, which is still a reasonable rate, and it's not uncommon to pay origination fees or fees that are ancillary to acquire this kind of funding. Do you gentlemen see what my points were, and do you agree with them, or?
Sure, this is Tom Douglas of Utese Rock, he wanted a couple things on the numbers of questions that were raised. Section two is referring to the low stuff payment that the board or the district is going to receive ever to expiate leasing, the leasing of that current elementary school to the trustee for that through 2034, you know, to that period of time, and so that amount of money that on closing of the financing that the district is going to receive to be able to pay the costs of the energy performance contract, and so that's why that number is 1,200,000, but not more than 1,250,000.
Okay.
When you look at section four, the certificate, and we've left a little bit of room in there in the event that there were some costs that were basically, as we're seeing, are just not known right now, but the certificate may be, you know, up to 1,275,000, because there might be some additional costs that Alpine Bank comes up with at the end, or the reserve fund or something to that nature, that might, in fact, the banking amount, certificate being slightly higher, and that's why this is different than those figures, because section four is referring to the principal amount of the certificate, section two is referring to the cash deposit that the district will receive on closing. Now, the other difference in the numbers that was noted, in section three, the annual payments that the school district is going to make are not to exceed 110,000, that principal and interest, the total annual payment for rent under the lease purchase where the district is leasing the Decatur Elementary School back, if you will, from the trustee, the cap on the dollar amount that can be paid is 110,000 in the document, but in section four, where there's a reference to sinking fund redemption not exceeding 1,500,000, that's actually a principal amount, that doesn't include interest. And the principal amount, as you amortize, you pay more principal, less interest, the difference in the two numbers is, for that last payment, there's a payment of about 1,500, the principal, and roughly a little over 3,000 of interest, and that, that's basically the difference between 110,000 in section three and 1,500 in section two. They're not typos, it's just different permutations of the numbers that are being made.
I see.
So hopefully, that answers the question of, you know, is there a typo in the resolution? No, it's just sort of speaking to different measures, different amounts.
Okay, so one is dealing with the grand figure, the first one referred to includes principal and interest, and in section four, that is just principal.
Correct.
The payment, I'm looking at the, I looked at the lease, and just let me ask you, of course, Alpine Bank, as I understand it, is the lender, but all the documents refer to UMB Bank as being the trustee?
Correct.
Now, how's that, explain that to me.
Well, basically, there needs to be a third party, if you will, that, that basically is holding that leasehold interest and leasing it back to the district to accommodate the financing, because on an economic basis, really what the district is doing is taking for a term of roughly 25 years, the lease, the site lease, right, 2034, so roughly, yeah, roughly, it's a little over, little over 20 years, but the district will be leasing from the trustee that, you know, basically, the leasehold interest in its facility back, and so that's what the function that the trustee accomplishes, so that's why it's got their role of the financing. They in turn take that lease payment and reference to a certificate of participation, they typically issue certificates that are then purchased by Alpine Bank, and there's a principal component and an interest component associated with those certificates, that they basically are the same answer, the rental payment is the same as the principal and interest on the certificate.
Okay, well, at least...
So they basically acted, the sublet's were back to the district.
And the lease document, as I understand it, is a 20-year term, but the amortization schedule is a 50-year amortization, why the difference?
Right. Well, the reason for that is, the district, I mean, and this is to accommodate the constitutional paper requirement, the Board of Education can annually decide whether or not it wants to appropriate for payments or rental payments for Decatur Elementary School, and on an annual basis, the board can decide, I no longer want to appropriate monies for that lease payment. And if that were to occur, the reason the site lease lasts a little bit longer is it typically would take a longer period of time for the trustee to sublet to a third party for use of the facility and charge rent and recruit the payments that need to be made to Alpine Bank for their initial investment.
And looking at the amortization schedule, we are looking at a fixed rate of 3% grand.
Correct.
Okay, one other question that I had, and I was looking in the lease purchase agreement, and as I understand it, the lease purchase agreement is drawn up basically so we can repurchase this back in the event circumstances change or some point in time during the life of the agreement, we can buy back the certificate and go ahead and pay it off ahead of time, is that correct?
That, that's correct, and how it can speak to discussions with Alpine Bank is to exactly deal what the conditions for that purchase back are, but the documents provide, and there's something referred to as advance funding, but the documents from Alpine Bank may basically require that the conditions from Alpine Bank may be, they don't get payback for a period of eight years, but let's say in year five, the school district wanted to exercise this option to purchase the property, what the district would need to do in that instance would be to escrow enough money to be able to make payments for the following three years, both the total principal balance of the certificate and the interest that's going through that eight year until that optional call can occur.
Okay.
Apparently, we have in the documents the ability, if the school were to go to a bond election, let's say, for whatever reason down the road, that these certificates could be refunded and paid off without penalty at any time, but whether or not there's, the call protection, and it's generally referred to, to the investor, something to be negotiated by top of the district's behalf.
Is this Todd or Tom, you remember Tom?
This is Mr. Mills.
Okay, would you help me with something, then, because I understood in the conference call that we had earlier this week, there was a condition that in the event that we wanted to buy out the whole thing, say, for instance, we had a bond election or came into a beneficiary or something like that, we would, actually, we had up to, after seven years, we could do that without any prepayment penalty or any penalties whatsoever, is that correct?
Yeah, this is Todd Snyder with George Gilson, so that is absolutely correct, I think that our, our best efforts to get you the shortest optional redemption possible is something that we're working on. I think that getting here is that, just a 15-year loan, but we want to make sure that should there be some, plenty of general modern district, that it's not easy for anything else to the degree that rates go down, although even little rates have gone down, at some point in the future, if you want to refinance the sublocation, that is done in a call date as well, so I think that it's very reasonable to, as I said, we do get Alpine Bank to agree to allow for a payment after that seven years of payments with no additional interest exposed, no penalty, if you will.
And would you help, Todd, excuse me, would you help me, show me where that's at in the document?
In the indenture, you look, it's under Article four of the indenture, and the permission that basically says that there's motor authorization for general obligation bonds that can be paid off at any time, that's 402, which is page 19 of the indenture. There's another section 403 that basically says, as long as the district's not borrowing the money, that it could use legally available money to pay back at any time, now that's subject to Alpine's acceptance of that provision, and that's 403, and then the optional redemption, the optional redemption that Todd's referring to, just has an open date right now, we didn't fill it in, but that's section 405, that of the indenture.
So that will be filled in, and that'll be the seven-year...
Right, and under the lease purchase agreement, the concept of payment of the purchase price is whatever these, you know, whatever provision you're operating under in the indenture for the call of the certificate, you know, which one is the most advantageous to the district for the call at that time, and it would be, you know, paying whatever it takes to be able to pay off the certificate on whatever date the respective redemption provision or operating under would provide for it.
There was a question raised, basically, would need a title policy, how was that resolved?
So just to give an update, there's Scott Schout, George Gilson's on the phone as well, so you can kind of fill in the actual process, if you can, but we contacted six different firms to provide title insurance, to get them to give us a quote, again, title insurance is something that is required by the buyers to know that they've got the title in the facility that we use as collateral, and we received two quotes, one was about $2,400, Scott, that's...
It's 2675, American Title Services, and the other quote is, you know, the National, a little over 1,400.
Right. Now, and then we have four additional firms in the state who were unable to get to us, both because of the geography and the trade that, and also just because of the concern about, you know, responding to title matter, the firm that's slightly more expensive, didn't get the ability to get this done for us within the next week, and that is critical because knowing how little of summer is left, how much more construction period would be available to Siemens, we can't pull this transaction and actually get the funds we need for the project until we have title insurance at hand, and so even though one bid was a little less expensive, again, it's kind of open ended, it'd take a couple of weeks, so again, we know, might think that would be a better deal, but if it pulls up the entire transaction, it's not going to save anyone.
Well, I mean, if we go ahead and if we do rule on the resolution tonight, it would be incumbent on the title policy being obtained and cleared, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Section 1406 of the lease purchase agreement talks about giving notice, it has the Maple Street address, I know this is a picky thing, but obviously, that's not where the administration office is going to be, and so that and any other corresponding references to notifications should be to the Everett School address. I think, I think that it's, my questions accept that by reference somewhere, we need to refer either in the resolution, or the lease agreement, or the purchase, or all three, I'm not sure what's the appropriate spot, but we need to, if we have not already, and maybe I missed it, the pricing summary and the interest rate and all the cost information that's on this, that's been provided by Alpine Bank, is that in there, or have I missed it, or does it need to be added?
This is Tom Douglas of Utese Rock, he wanted a couple things on the numbers of questions that were raised. The payment with the dollar amounts that are in the district's rental union or... in the district's resolution were obtained or were calculated based on the Alpine Bank's proposal. But assuming they go firm, which I don't know, Todd, I think they've gone firm above the 3%. I mean, the reason that it wasn't referenced in the indenture yet, and it will be, is that I haven't seen the final term sheet yet. But the dollar amount in the resolution not to exceed, and if the interest rate went up from the 3%, for example, that section 3, fair value of the lease property, the annual rate of 110,000, wouldn't work anymore because the payment would need to be higher if the interest rate were higher. So in a sense, the dollar amount in the Board's resolution, and that's what's seen about incorporating that information, they just don't state it explicitly.
Well, I would like to see, I mean, you know, in the resol, let's see, in the resolution, I do, you do refer to the lease agreement, I believe, you know, I would like to have that in the documents by reference to make sure that what we're voting on here is a 3% rate for a 50-year term.
Fixed.
And with, with the, yeah, for the life of the contract, with the reference to the cost of the current, in order to originate the loan for the lease agreement.
Okay, one thing, under the imperative of the indenture, we could add that since at the end of that paragraph that said, the stated interest rate of the certificate shall not exceed 3% per annum.
I'd go along with that.
And so when the Board adopts the resolution, the Federal Department of Energy, that can use the paper, I mean, the resolution would be amended with inclusion of the sentence in section 4, the stated interest rate of the certificate shall not exceed 3% per annum. And I can email that, or vice resolution, if the purpose of the Board adoption, that would just could be incorporated in motion should the Board decide to adopt the resolution.
I would recommend that we do that. Um, how, Kristi?
No, you've asked everything.
Did I?
I've been everything that we've been told.
Was that off that checklist?
I've told you all about it.
If anybody else had a comment for Kristin?
So things, I just wanted to wait to get down to technical, but I'll defer to somebody else.
Okay.
Basically, when we took this project on, when we started working with Mr. Lane with Siemens, and he said that we would have energy savings over X number of years, and with those energy savings, we would be able to not only improve our energy by retrofitting lights and so on and so forth and save energy money, but we'd also be able to generate some things in which we could do things like improve security or whatever it was, absolutely whatever. That was the first phase of this. The second phase then was obtaining enough money to be able to do that. And that's where we went out looking for loans, and that's the process we're in right now. Saying this, I understand, I'm saying it for the benefit of the people in the audience as well. But it sounds to me like, when I read this, that we're basically putting up this school or a portion of the school as collateral for our loans.
That's true. A wing of this school that it is, which wing?
This is-
Oh, well, that brings up another question for me, but basically, a wing of the school will be held as collateral for the life of the agreement. It's, you know, there's, we don't envision any way that it's going to, that we're going to lose that. There is a fairly good force majeure clause in the contract, that means if there's an act of God or something like that, we're covered. You know, I, I think that what I see is that what we have here is, is fair to the customer. I'm not a lawyer, you know, there's a lot of things, I was really looking for consistencies amongst the number, but I don't believe that we're putting ourselves at risk for the school to risk.
My, my, I guess my question, my concern is, Siemens, with their contract with us on the energy, guarantee X number of dollars of savings a year. If the savings is not there, they'll backfill whatever's missing in the savings. So we have a guaranteed amount of dollars over X number of years that are going to be coming in for the energy conservation. I don't understand why we have to put up a building for collateral when we have a guarantee from Siemens to have this money.
Well, I understand your concern, Paul, but the agreement between us and Siemens is between us and Siemens.
Right.
The agreement between the financial institution and us is another thing. It's not a three-way connected-
Well, I understand that.
And so Alpine Bank, who will be putting up the money, you know, is going to look for collateral just like they would with any other R.
Well, I mean, because this agreement we're going to have with Siemens is also by the state of Colorado, right? It's got to be approved by the state in order for us to do this, correct?
That's correct.
So we've got an agreement that's been approved by the state of Colorado, given a written dollar amount of guarantee per year from Siemens, and yet the bank is still wary of us enough that they won't give us money based on that, they still want to have a building as collateral? How uncomfortable with that? I really am.
Let me, let me, let me share with you what my understanding is. The FIMs, the settlement improvement measures, and we have a number of them that begin with lighting all the way down to security as your wealth. Because of the fact that none of those FIMs are of the nature that they could stand alone as collateralized items, that's why it is necessary for the school district to put up a wing of the, of the facility, either this wing or any facility, but this is the one facility that has portions of the wing that we could do that to provide the collateral. Only because of the monies that we're providing for the FIMs are not collateralized, that's why we have to put it up.
I understand that. The money we're putting in the lighting does not balance the amount of money we're borrowing, but that's not what I'm driving at. What I'm driving at is Siemens and the state of Colorado with the agreement and so on, basically Siemens has agreed that we're going to save so much money if we agree to this, we're going to save so much money per year based on the things they're going to do. That's a guaranteed amount. To me, that amount coming in should be enough for the loan institution to say, yep, Siemens guarantees you X number of dollars a year coming in, we'll accept that as your collateral because Siemens guaranteed it. It's a guarantee from one and the other. I'm really uncomfortable with putting up a building when I've got this background from Siemens coming in. I don't think they should want any more than that.
Mr. Pelz, can you respond to that?
And I think I just referred to earlier in the sense that in order to obtain the lowest interest rate, Alpine Bank is in effect lending the money to the trustee to be paid to the school district for some thing in consideration and compensation to the lending of, you know, that 1.2 million, if you will. So for that, the school district is putting up the east wing of the Eckard Elementary School, which if you look at the insured values of that facility, you approximate the cost of what that facility value is, so that it's a fair exchange there with respect to the energy conservation contract. There are guarantees, I haven't, you know, I haven't read the contract with that in mind representing the district in that regard. So there are guarantees that are enforceable under the contract that the district had pursued if those energy savings levels aren't obtained. But for that, you just have to look at the contract, but the issue that's being raised is really is insoluble in that the monies aren't coming from the state, the monies aren't coming from the contractor, the image performance contract, they're coming from a third-party independent lender. And that's why there needs to be independent collateral.
Yeah, it's up to, Paul, we try one more different way to explain. So I think that beyond changing the residence to put the building, but again, really, if you look at it in respect of the bank, the bank doesn't really care about heat, heating analysis, they don't care about the state endorsing this program. All I really think of is the bank is that Siemens has guaranteed that the school district will receive the savings of glory to God's, over the period of time of the loan. It doesn't guarantee the bank that that savings translates into payments on that loan. So absolutely what they're looking to do is they're looking for the fact that if you put up this building and they don't pay your payments, you're going to lose the access to be able to leave that facility with a terminal loan, and absolutely with the assurance that you won't figure that. You both know that payment will be coming from the savings from your loan, or excuse me, the savings from the insurance, Tom. How's Grayson doing?
And that's because of the third party. So if we were dealing directly with the bank, would that be the same?
Eckard.
You mentioned that the third party needed the building to be able to guarantee this to back to the bank if you were working with a third party. If we were down at the First National Bank here in Trinidad, or Century Savings, or the other bank in Trinidad, any one of the three, or all of the three of them together, and you work directly with the bank, would that same kind of collateral be required?
Likely yes, I mean, this is Tom telling me, that, you know, the only way to set it up, I guess, in the manner that you're envisioning it, would be if the banks were comfortable enough that an assignment of a guarantee by Siemens was sufficient collateral, and I just haven't seen that before.
Paul, just-
Yeah, I know we did try to, we did try to contact both banks in the Trinidad area because they gave us, and neither was willing, or neither was comfortable taking on the entire amount of the loan, so I did not really have the collateral backing to do, but I would suspect they're not going to, you know, particularly give a purview, they're operating under now increased scrutiny from the federal deposit or insurance company. I just, I think that pretty much any bank, if you're about to blow up like that, you would require a collateral.
You said banks individually probably wouldn't, what about collectively?
Did you hear that?
I'm sorry.
Todd? I'm sorry, yeah. The question I had was, you mentioned that individually you contacted a couple of the banks, and they didn't feel like they would be able to do that, the local banks. Individually, I said, but collectively, were they contacted in that context to be able to make the loan collectively?
That's accurate. We, you know, initially we had, we've done several different banks look for interest, and then I think after we struck out on the first round, we spoke with Dr. Rodriguez about existing banking relationships, schools are cast to see if they might be in a hole with the creditors to our school districts, and I think that, you know, we made this call, we spoke to the First National Bank, the International Bank, definitely.
Yes.
And, you know, I think that they, they've seen the goal, and they do not want to make that hole out of the loan, and I don't know, let's see, I want them all to be in that way, just because of the, you know, what's, but see, see, there are small things on banks can be on the side of one, two different ones, like, get into the names of their protection. But I just, I think it's fairly wrong what I said, and what Dr. Rodriguez said, is the, if the assets that'll be purchased with the loan are not themselves, it's almost collateral. If you were using this money to buy new plastic, the guts of themselves would be appreciated. But given the fact that these are all smaller improvements that really could be made and resolved, or could be money due to the bank, I think that's why we're stating, obviously the closest one.
And we, oh, just for, just for everybody's information, we had considered using the existing admin building as collateral, and we could have actually done that. But given that we don't know what the, the long-term disposition of that facility is going to be, we saw it as a downside issue to lock in a loan with that building as the guarantee, given that we might have an opportunity to sell it down the road and liquidate it, and you really don't want to get a situation, have renegotiated, you know, the money and whatnot, as a result of that kind of change. And so we saw that as maybe an impetus to pursuing that path.
Madam President, members of the Board, and members of the audience, just to share information, I also contacted Cheryl Hollingsburg from CPE related to the grant and her, her recommendation that the school district provides some decommissioning and value utilization of its spaces. And after two days of consideration, I spoke with her today, and she has given us the okay to move forward with this project from her perspective. She does ask that in September, October, we get back and we provide an assessment online, that we update all the positive information that the Board has taken in relationship to the decommissioning and the consolidation. So I just wanted to share that for the Board as well.
Well, as I said earlier, I'm very uncomfortable with putting up a building, this particular building obviously had a lot of work done to it in terms of improvements, and the voters paid for a loan issue in order to be able to make the improvements here in Fisher's Peak and so on. I think if we go into a multi-year agreement for a loan, and even though it's a lease, and I understand that that's probably the caveat that makes it overcome Tabor, in principle it may overcome Tabor, but in the idea behind that Tabor move was that we don't put our taxpayers in multi-year financial agreements, and that's what that seems to do if we want to maintain the building afterwards. And so I'm concerned about that as well.
Do we have any other questions, Madam President?
I don't know, do we have any? I don't have any. Anyone else?
I don't have a question, just the thing that, you know, we've been discussing this for a year and a half, and in no time did, you know, Mr. Lane, or Siemens, ever come up and say that we were going to have to put up a building for collateral. So it's troubling for me from that perspective. And then as well as, you know, there's three documents here, lengthy documents with a lot of legalese, and I feel well uncomfortable voting in favor of this. And the next question, I guess, is the question I have, that we have our attorney review these documents.
I sent the information, these documents, to our legal counsel. I spoke with them, and what they indicated, that Mr. Pelz, who is a lawyer, a finance lawyer, working on our behalf, is very competent and is very well-regarded, and is one of the top in his field, and our legal counsel felt very comfortable that any issues that he would be providing support on our behalf.
And technically, Mr. Pelz is our attorney in this transaction. He is representing us, and so you're, you know, he's, his fees are in.
Well, and again, just so I stated that clearly, when we do come to a vote on the consent agenda, this item has been removed and to be voted on by itself. And I will vote against it for those reasons. I don't believe we should be taking a building and putting it up as collateral when that building had improvements that were voted on by the taxpayers via bond issue, first of all, and I think we're somewhat circumventing Tabor by doing things this way, and I'm not comfortable with that as well. I thought that we were going to be able to borrow this money, just like any other money based on what we were going to have coming in with this energy conservation, it was going to be a straight across deal. This throws a twist into it that I just not accepted, so we'll hold on.
Mr. Stile and Mr. Pelz, we have appreciate you taking the time to be here, so now we're going to disconnect.
Before we leave.
Okay, just one moment.
Mr. Pelz indicated the other day on the conference call, this procedure has been validated by the courts, and the procedure has been approved by the state. We consulted with the state, and Mr. Pelz, is that accurate?
Yeah, the, I mean, the courts have ruled on this structure, this type of structure, and the school districts around the state have also used the same structure as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate this. Have a good evening. Okay, let's move on to 6.2, leadership stipend, Fisher's Peak, Illinois. I believe you had an opportunity to look at that, it was also sent by Ms. Montoya through an email.